Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 17th, 2012, City Council Meeting for the City of Waukegan. Roll call, please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Alderman Bedling.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
President.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Please rise for the moment of silence.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to need to move an item up the agenda, so what we'll do is we'll put this before the mayor's comments, because we have some folks here who are in from Chicago and would like to be able to get this done while they're still present. So if I could have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to move up the Joint Finance Public Works Agenda items preceding the mayor's comments. Do we have those motions?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. So we will go now down on the agenda. Following Finance Committee report, next is the Joint Finance Public Works Committee report, and I'm assuming that Finance is going to take the lead on this, Alderman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Approval of Ordinance 12-0, amending Chapter 24 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding rates for water and sewage service, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have any comments or questions?
Do we have that ordinance, Mr. Clerk?
I think we should, Coach.
Yeah.
Is Ann Lynn still here?
Just like a break, everybody.
Yeah. Could Ann come up and give us an overview? Thank you, Ann.
Sure. Yeah, just to brief on this proposed ordinance. Last, and this is in order to fund the -- or to support the bonds and fund the proposed improvements at the water plant, as was discussed in the previous meeting. Last December, the City Council passed an ordinance increasing water rates for 2012 and 2013, and the first series went into effect May 1st of this year at 5 percent. Already, 2013 has also been passed at 5 percent. The proposed ordinance that you have before you tonight would increase rates for 2014, 15, 16, and 17 at 2.5 percent each per year. And going forward from May 1st, 2018, rather than a percentage amount, any increases would be tied to the Consumer Price Index for inflation with a maximum percentage increase of 105 percent, 5 percent. But it would only -- the rates would only go up automatically if the CPI went up also in that year, starting May 1st, 2018. So the ordinance has those proposed increases, and then also has a section on proposed minimum quarterly charges, which also track at that same percentage rate increases.
The minimum charge. What is the minimum charge now?
The minimum charge now? That's a good question.
There is no. Yeah, I don't believe there is one, is there?
Yes, sir. Outside the city, we have a minimum gallonage charge, but inside the city, we do have --
I think we do.
You know what? I've got them on fire.
Where's Tom? Just moved. If I could serve water. I just want to make sure the public understands.
I have it now. I'm sorry. I wasn't going right to it. Right now, it is $9.70 per quarter for properties within the city for water service alone. For sewer service alone for properties within the city, it is $7.28 per quarter. And for combined residential water and sewer within the city, it is $16.98 per quarter. And then we also have minimums for non-residential water service, which is for industrial and commercial properties. Those, right now, are $19.40 per quarter for water service alone. For non-residential, again, commercial, industrial, those types of properties, sewer service alone is currently $14.55 per quarter. And combined water and sewer service, again, for the commercial industrial properties, is currently $33.96 per quarter. So again, the proposed ordinance would track increases at the same percentage rates, and you've already approved increases for 2013, last December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item B, approve ordinance 12-0, amending authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $9 million first lien water and sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2012 of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for letting us move this up the agenda so that our guests would be able to get a start back to -- back home, back to Chicago, I believe. So next, we will go back to the regular agenda rotation. So next, we have mayor's comments. First, I'd like to let everybody know that we have the Second Annual Waukegan Spirit Day, which is coming up Friday, September 28th, 2012. On this day, we'd like you to show your community spirit by wearing your favorite Waukegan apparel to receive premiums, promotional items, discounts, et cetera, from participating Waukegan businesses. If your business would like to participate, contact Dave Motley's office at 847-599-2510, and let us know what special offer you would like us to promote, and we will add this information to our website, waukegownet.net/spirit.html, and also to our social media pages. I want to commend the organizers for all the hard work that was put into Sunday's Festivus Patrias Parade. We had a crowd well over 8,000 in attendance that were there to enjoy the parade and the great weather we enjoyed all of this weekend. My thanks goes out to all of those who revisited the parade route and worked so hard to make sure that it was completely cleaned up of the debris left over from the celebration. Great job, and I'm looking forward to next year's event. Saturday's Art Walk event was another great success, and my thanks go out to our own Dave Motley for all his hard work and the efforts of our friends at Main Street, who are always working to make sure our downtown events are successful. In fact, Main Street won the Illinois Main Street Awards for Excellence in Downtown Revitalization for all their efforts towards the walk. Thank you, and keep up the good work. It's really starting to pay off. Those of you who have been coming down to these events are starting to see a lot of new faces, more people coming, the restaurants are benefiting. It's really working out very well. And then lastly, I would like to recognize Waukegan firefighter Tom Christensen for his Firefighter of the Year Award presented by the National Leadership of the American Legion. It is an honor for me to declare Fire Prevention Day 2012, which occurs on October 9th, as Captain Tom Christensen Fire Prevention Day in Waukegan. Congratulations to Tom and his family for the honor he has won, but also the honor that he has brought to the City of Waukegan with his accomplishments. Tom, thank you very much. And we have -- we're not done with Tom yet. We'll work him over a little bit more before the meeting is done, but Tom, again, congratulations. Tom's a great guy, very humble, you know, great family, and it was an honor to be able to acknowledge what he has attained in his career. This is a big deal for Waukegan and for the Fire Department and Tom. That concludes the mayor's comments. Next, we will have audience time. First up is our own Treasurer, Dr. John Schwab.
Good evening, mayor of the City Council and guests. On this weekend, the Waukegan Township Class of 1962 will have our 50th year class reunion. We have about 190 people that are either in town or from out of town. Will be in attendance on Friday night at a barbecue up at Bonnybrook. The weekend starts on Friday morning. We're going to Lake Geneva for a boat cruise, some golf in the afternoon, barbecue. On Saturday, we will be into the Genesee for a tour, Old East Campus for a tour, and we'll be at Glen Flora that evening. The next day, we will have a brunch down at the Yacht Club. I do want to note that one of the fine Aldermen that we have in the City of Waukegan was one of the teachers. There's only about 20 that I could contact in the local area and invite for Friday night, and we'll be graced with -- Mr. Larry Tempest was going to attend on Friday, and we'll be glad to see any of the teachers that are available. Just want to let you know that our class is going to have probably the largest amount of people at a reunion in the last many years. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Should be fun. Next, we have Mr. Chris Blanks. Chris?
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Black Abolition Movement for the Mine and National Action Network of Lake County, and on behalf of our organization, we commend the firemen as well. As I was traveling through the city today and throughout this week, one of the things that I want to mention is some of the construction work that is going on in the area. I commend 60th District, the school district, for putting some policies in place to try to enforce a better sense of inclusion of everybody in the city. As I rode through the city this past week, last week, we had Campanella Construction, which was working down the main artery of the city, and there was Hispanics, and there was blacks -- there was Hispanics and there was whites working. There was not one African-American on the job. They had about seven to 10 workers out there at that time. Today, as I traveled through the city, I noticed there was major construction going on downtown. And at that time, there was about 13 to 15 construction workers, maybe, I think, one black, one African-American. And as we move over to the art space, now, art space started out, and it looked like it was trying to be some inclusion there. However, I might mention that I, as I observed at the art space project, today, there was 14 construction workers. Now that those 14 construction workers, there was 13 whites, one female, and not a single black or African-American coming out of that job site. A lack of inclusion here. And I heard Alderman mention it before, and I came down and I commended you guys on the art space project, because it looked like you were starting out to be some inclusion of diversity somewhere. Somebody is dropping the ball on the enforcement of inclusion of these policies here. What happens when you do that? You put a strain on your police department. And the answer to these problems is not an increased presence of police in the community. Because if you include some policies where there's more inclusion, then it increases the chance of everybody in the city working, opposed to hanging out on the corners trying to sell drugs or other things, criminal activities. So you all put the strain on your police department when you don't enforce policies of inclusion. So don't send an increased presence of police in the community until you have done more to try to increase the inclusion of everybody on these job sites. That's not the answer. You don't send a police officer, overzealous police officer like a -- I got a -- you know, I know y'all believe in, just like, you know, the firemen and other police officers, when they do good things, you mention their names here, and that's a good thing. And I also believe that when you have overzealous police officers who are not good for the police department, who have their own agenda, I think their names should be mentioned here too. So I'm going to mention Officer Fong today, and I have what I call here my Fong file, because this officer come to our community, and he want to issue tickets this past week for young people driving up in one-way alley. He give a ticket for driving up a one-way alley on a bicycle.
Point of order?
Okay.
Who's calling that?
We're beyond three minutes.
All right. No, I'm not beyond my three minutes.
Actually, Chris, I've got you at 3:20 at this point, but let's give him an additional one minute.
Okay, thank you.
To conclude his comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate the conclusion of that.
Yeah, Alderman Cunningham.
Your Honor, hold before -- and we've mentioned this before, and I know Chris, he has some valid points, but names, we chose not to use names on the floor.
Okay, well.
We did thank you, Joe Chris, but valid point.
All right, all right, all right. Well, so anyway, that particular officer that I was speaking of come through the community, and he want to issue tickets for people driving up on a bicycle, on a one -- on a bicycle in the alley, one way. That's not right. Then he want to issue tickets for people not having front license plate. Now, for one thing, I thought this officer was just an officer who go by the letter of the law. My conclusion, I have a problem with that, because if you going to issue tickets to the rest of the community for not having a front license plate, then you should start at your own home, because on that same day, I go to the police department, I pull up on your lot, and you got officers who is sitting out there right now with no front license plate. So you have what you call a double standard. Nobody should be above the law. You're going to increase those policies in my community, make sure you clean your own yard up. So you can't send an Officer Fong. This is my Officer Fong file. And if anybody else is having problem with that particular officer, 773-510-1713. We can't tolerate that here.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Thank you. And you're right, I didn't hear him say that, actually, to be honest with you. I didn't hear him mention the officer by name. I apologize for that.
We said.
Chris, that is, if I could. Chris, that is something we do try to avoid in this setting. If you come to us where we can discuss this off of this public scene, as it were, that's a whole different story. But he's right, I didn't hear you, and I should have caught it. That's my fault, so I apologize for that. But again, just in the future, let's keep that in mind, if you could, please. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Hahn.
Mark Hahn at 104 West Street. I'm here tonight to talk about a safety issue that's been -- I've been observing, especially this last summer, and it has to do with our beachfront. I've been a long-term user of the beach. I love it. I go down there all the time. And the last couple of years, there's been no lifeguards, and I have to commend people for doing a pretty good job of self-policing themselves. We haven't had any bad accidents down there, but it doesn't take much to see that a bad accident is on our way, especially at the South Beach, where we have all kinds of watercraft. And I handed out a few flyers to some of the Aldermen earlier. If you could share them with some of those that might not have it. It basically lays out an area that I would like to see protected with a very simple buoy that says "No Watercraft." I'm not encouraging anything else other than preventing watercraft from coming into the areas where our children, and I mean our Waukegan kids and families, like to visit, the South Beach and a portion of the North Beach, where a lot of kids end up in the water. And I would liken what's going on there with the jet skis to allowing motorcycles to do stunts in a playground area. It's gotten very bad. I have personally seen, with my own eyes and in the water, a driver and a passenger be thrown off their jet ski, and the jet ski then proceeded to go out about 20 feet, and then it started going in circles, which I'm told that's their safety mechanism for if somebody's thrown off the craft. That could have been worse, and now I'm seeing them play chicken, and for the lack of a better term, seems like they want to bullfight when you get a bunch of these jet skis in that area. And I'm talking inside five feet of water, four feet of water, right around the swimmers. Now, Mr. Valco pointed out that after six feet, it's out of our jurisdiction. The lines that I happen to put on those sketches of the South Beach and the North Beach actually mirror about the six-foot mark. And I'm very familiar with where the water lines are and how deep it gets. It might go six and a half feet somewhere, but if you follow those lines, and you got the buoys that are very effective in other areas, I'll reference Illinois Beach State Park, another area I like to frequent, you don't see the boats and the jet skis coming in their areas where people are swimming, because they have out there buoys that say "No Watercraft." It's a very simple thing. They cost $100 apiece. On the third page of the handout I gave you, I referenced a company in Wisconsin right over the line that makes them. They cost about $110 apiece. If you anchor them correctly, with about 80 pounds of weight, they won't float away, they won't move, they'll stay in the same spot. So it's a solution that is easy to employ, not too costly, and, you know, we've read about the Borussia kid out in the chain, that tragedy, and I'm hoping that I don't see or have an incident like that happen at our lakefront. I'm pleading to the people in power to try to take a step just to protect our citizens and anybody else who's at the beach. It's one of the greatest things we have. I enjoyed, a lot of people do. It's one of our treasures, and I hope it's not a place where we have to mourn someone's severe injury or worse. I appreciate if you give some attention. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Next, Violet Ricker.
My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 203 West Water Street in downtown Waukegan, and I'm also the Director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit. I want to echo the mayor's comments about how wonderful it was to see so many people downtown this weekend for the Art Walk and for Festivus Patrias. It was really, really fun to look out my window and see people up and down Genesee Street. And we were really honored, as an Illinois Main Street community, to receive some statewide recognition for the Art Walk program. We got to talk to a lot of other communities and their downtown programs that are looking to replicate that. And lastly, I just want to thank everybody who was able to attend our annual meeting last week. We installed five new board members to our Board of Directors. Their biographies are listed on our website, if anybody would like to check out waukegannmainstreet.org. And over the next few months, our Board of Directors and committees are going to be working to establish our work plans for the following year. So if anybody has any ideas about things that they'd like to see downtown, or if they'd like to get involved with the committee or volunteer, you can visit that same website, our caller office at 847-623-6650. We'd love to hear your ideas. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Violet. Okay, that concludes our public comments for this evening. Thanks, everybody, for coming and getting involved. Next, we have the minutes. Take a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th, 2012, regular meeting and executive session meetings from Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Bedling. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next, we have resolutions, proclamations, and presentations. This evening, we're fortunate to have Katie McGinnis with us, who is going to give a short, approximately about 10-minute presentation about the work that Lake County Workforce Development is doing in Waukegan, and hopefully help people understand what's available here in the city relative to helping unemployed individuals or even employed individuals find jobs or better jobs. Katie, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, for inviting me, and thank you very much for taking time out to hear what we do at the Job Center. I am very excited about the things that we have going on. There's a lot going on. I'm a member of the Business Service Team. A lot of times, people are very familiar with the Job Center as far as sending people for training and doing those kinds of things, being a place for people to come and look for jobs. But a lot of -- one of the things that we do on the Business Service Team is be kind of that connection between out-of-town, out-of-work people and the businesses, the business community. So that's kind of what we try to do. We try to link people up. So we've been making a lot of changes lately, and I killed a tree or so, to give you guys a packet of information. And I do have extra packets, if anybody's interested, but I'll kind of try to go through and kind of hit the highlights about what it is that we're doing. We've made a couple of changes to our website, www.lakcountyjobcenter.com, and we have a "Who's Hiring?" button. You cannot miss it once you go on there. There's like the screaming, big, orange button for "Who's Hiring?", so it's a great place for people to go and check. We have businesses that will call us directly. They may not post these jobs on Career Builder or Monster or Indeed.com, any of those places, but they will call us to post jobs. We had over 4,000 visits to our website just last month in the "Who's Hiring?" section, so we're very, very excited about that. The first thing that people will see is our brand-new recruiting calendar. These are mostly onsite events that we have at the Job Center. We're really trying to highlight that so people can come into downtown Waukegan, have an opportunity to interview with somebody. They're not sending their resume off to the internet where nobody, they don't think anybody's ever going to see it. This is a chance for them to get in front of people, polish up their interviewing skills, and have a good sense right away whether or not they're going to get a job. Tomorrow, we're excited, because LTD Commodities is coming. They're looking for some full-time call center individuals. So if you know anybody who's looking for a job, have them stop by the Job Center tomorrow, because we have not only LTD Commodities looking to fill quite a few of those spots, but we also have Walmart from both the Waukegan store and the Zion store looking to fill quite a few permanent positions. These aren't just seasonal positions, these are permanent positions. So we're getting a higher level of visibility in the community, in the business communities, so we're very excited about that. I think last month, we had well over 1,000 people that came and got interviewed and got met at the Job Center by employers. And we're just starting to keep track of how many people get hired from that. So we're very excited about that. This is, when people come to our website, this is the first thing that they can see under the "Who's Hiring?" section. You can see we have a lot of things going on. If you know somebody that would appreciate the flyers, make sure you pass those around. We also let you know about other things that are going on, some of our other Job Centers. So if there's an onsite event going on somewhere else, we make sure that you know about that as well. One of the things that we are very excited about, we have a partnership going with the Alliance for Illinois Manufacturing, AIM. They're going to be working with us to help place our dislocated workers, which are people who are unemployed because they were laid off or fired from a job, for an on-the-job training opportunity. So they're working with the business community, and we're working with our dislocated workers to make them prepared for some on-the-job training opportunities. A business can save 50% of the salaries. We will pay 50% of their salaries from the WEA Training Grant money that we have for up to the first six months for an individual. So it can be huge savings for our business community. They can bring on an employee that they may not otherwise bring on, somebody who has skills not quite where they need it to be, so we can help with those training costs, help the business out. So we have an information session going for both the employers on Thursday and also potential OJT candidates. So we're very excited about that going on this week. And then we also try to make sure that people understand what's going on in the business community. So to that end, we have a guest speaker series, and this week Alexis Willock from Key Lime Cove is going to come and talk to our job seekers, explain to them about what's going on in the hospitality industry, find out what they need to do in order to get themselves prepared for a good job in that industry, and get a chance to meet somebody who could be hiring them. In the past, we've had people from manufacturing come in from, let me think, what the other -- manufacturing is the one that I remember right now. I'm a little spazzy. And then one of the other great things that we have an opportunity to do, we have incumbent worker training grants. We like a lot of terminology in the Business Service Team. What that means is we can help businesses who need to improve the skill level of the current employees that they have. So if there's a company that's maybe having a little bit of trouble, they're about to lay some people off, they need to have some training to kind of upgrade those skills, we can help out with that training. So what I would hope that you do is share this information with your constituents, make sure that they understand, not only the job seekers, but also the businesses that are in your areas. Let them know that we are here to help. We are kind of your walking, talking tax dollars. So we are here to help them. A lot of people know what we do for job seekers, not a lot of people know what we do for the businesses. So I appreciate your help in getting that information out. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I just want to say it's a shame that the gentleman in the front row left so soon, because this is exactly what he was looking for. because this is exactly what he was looking for. Could we forward this information on to him somehow?
We'll get it to Chris.
Point well taken.
I still have some more packets of information, so I can leave an extra one for you. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
You know, Waukegan Road...
Ralph, could you use your mic, please, sir?
Waukegan Road, which is our corporate alley.
Okay.
Are you networking out there in terms of all these companies that are in that area there? Have you been able to make, establish any contacts there?
On a regular basis, we have a database of, I believe, about 450 employers in Waukegan that we, or not just Waukegan, in all of Lake County that we've done business with over, I think the database goes back about seven or eight years.
Right.
So specific names and numbers, I don't necessarily have. You'd have to give me the name of a particular one.
Well, I mean, you know, companies like WMS, what else you've got out there? I mean, you've got several...
Andrew Cutter.
Right. I mean, you've got some great companies out there that, you know, those are the type of jobs that are pretty, you know, pretty good jobs.
Absolutely. We go out, we are, we are kind of salespeople at heart. So we don't, you know, we try knocking on the door, we try calling. We'll do anything that we can in order to get, get in front of people and meet the people that are in the decision, in the positions to make hiring decisions. Sometimes people have a hard time imagining that we are as good as we say we are. People are looking for that extra catch. So we can help you, you know, when we tell people, we can help them identify candidates, source candidates for free or no cost. They're accustomed to paying a little bit higher price for that, so they have a hard time believing it. Until they kind of get accustomed to us, we have a chance to do well on their behalf and then they come back.
Thank you.
So if there's any businesses in particular you'd like me to contact, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the, just one last thing that we're doing, we're very excited about. We have what we're calling our talent pipeline. So all of our customers that have been through our training, we've kind of put them in our little silos based on their education and experience. So one of the ways that we've been able to help customer, help our business customers is when they have a job that they would like to have filled, we can do a very targeted email blast to those individuals, telling them about the job in a particular sector that matches up with their experience. So that's pretty new and we're very, you know, it seems to be working out very well right now.
Great. Thank you. Well, you know, the thing that, one of the problems we face in the United States is we have good workers, we have a lot of them, we have a lot of them that aren't working. One of the big problems is getting them trained to do the jobs that are going to be the economy for the next 30 years. And that's a difficult thing to do. A lot of it's high-tech, a lot of it is, you know, you're trying to deal with people who didn't get maybe the right type of education to be able to prepare themselves for it, so it's harder for them to catch up. But one of the big issues that Illinois has been dealing with is computer-controlled machining.
Oh, absolutely.
And you can't find them. You know, Andrew Cutter actually, you know, brought that to my attention up here, and we've put him in touch with the College of Lake County. We're trying to get business and the CLC working together so we target more specific areas of job training, which we've talked to Workforce Investment about these things in the past. If we can ever find the time to put together this industrial council that we want to start, you're going to be at the table because we need to work as partners. It's something that has to be done.
That would be, that would be great. I know we work with businesses too on the incumbent worker training grant. We were able to train a couple of people that were kind of lower-skilled individuals. They were, and trained them to be CNC operator, CNC operators for Vaporbus, I believe was the name of the company that we worked with.
That's great.
So we are, and it's really important that we get in front of people like you, so not only are we pounding the pavement and we're beating the drums that we have, you guys helping us out.
Well, and we get you on cable, and we get you on YouTube as well. So, you know, we're glad to have the information. Thank you for everything that you're doing.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution B.
This is a...
Go ahead.
Resolution 12R82. Whereas Captain Tom Christensen is a 24-year veteran of the Waukegan, Illinois Fire Department, and whereas Captain Tom Christensen was selected by the National Law and Order Committee as the American Legion 2012 National Firefighter of the Year. And whereas Captain Tom Christensen National Ward recognizes firefighters and emergency medical technicians who have selfishly, unselfishly distinguished themselves over and above their normal duties. And whereas Captain Tom Christensen has established his character, commitment, and credibility through his heroic acts, outstanding community service, and professional achievement. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanji and members of the Waukegan, Illinois City Council congratulate Tom, Captain Tom Christensen, who in distinguishing himself, has brought honor and credit to his family, his friends, and the city of Waukegan. Further be resolved that a suitably-imbossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Captain Tom Christensen dated this 17th day of September 2012.
Well, it's great when one of our people can be recognized in a way like that, and the city gets recognized. Like I said before, this is really a fantastic night for everybody involved. And Chief Young, it's a testament to the work that you put into your department and making sure that you guys are well-trained and also well-acknowledged. So thank you very much. Next, we have Item C, and this is a resolution for Edna Mae Johnson and her 100th birthday. This is exciting.
This is Resolution 12R81. Whereas Edna Mae Johnson Smith was born on September 27th, 1912, in Hope, Arkansas, and is now celebrating her 100th birthday this month. And whereas Edna Mae Johnson Smith during her long and productive life has earned the respect and admiration of her family, her friends, her church, and people of all walks of life by her demonstration of her commitment and dedication to her church, her community, and to the welfare of others. And whereas Edna Mae Johnson Smith has been an exemplary role model for her family and friends. And whereas Edna Mae Johnson, Johnson Smith has resided in Waukegan, Illinois for the past 26 years and has faithfully served Shiloh Baptist Church as an usher and as a deaconess, and has been involved in many civic activities within the city of Waukegan community. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanji and members of the Illinois, Waukegan, Illinois City Council deem it an honor and pleasure to congratulate Edna Mae Johnson Smith and extend to her their best wishes on her monumental occasion. Be it further resolved that a suitably-imbossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Edna Mae Johnson Smith dated the 17th day of September 2012.
Well, congratulations. And Alderman Cunningham, I understand that you're going to be taking this to the church?
Yes. As you can see, she's not here. I guess she didn't get the memo. But Shiloh Baptist Church will be honoring her on the 23rd, which would be a great, because that's going to be on my birthday, so I'm going to have something to celebrate with someone who's 100 years old. So I'll be doing that on that day.
That's great. Congratulations on that. It's 100 years, you know, Newt leaned over to me and said, you know, just amazing the changes that somebody has lived that long would have experienced and seen. I can't even, I mean, there's buildings that don't last 100 years. And yet here's the, something as frail as a flesh-and-blood human that has made it all these years, it's just astounding. So, you know, my mom's 96 and we're hoping she'll see 100. That'd be great. But it, you really, when you have it close to you and your family and you see people, it's just astounding how resilient as creatures we are, given how soft and easily penetrated we can be. So it is something that, you know, we can, we get hurt, we get bruised, we get cut, we get shot, and it's amazing that beating all those odds for all those years. So it's great, Sam. Give her our best, would you please?
I will.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Item D. This is a resolution closing the Amstutz Highway on September 27th from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. on September 28th, 2012, for filming of a television program titled Chicago Fire. Mr. Clerk, do you have?
Resolution 12R83. Whereas the television production, Chicago Fire, desires to film segments from their series on the Amstutz Expressway, starting at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, September 27th, and ending at 2:00 a.m. on Friday, September 28th. And whereas this event will require the temporary closure of the Amstutz Highway from Greenwood Avenue to Genesee Street during the filming. And whereas the state of Illinois requires that the city of Waukegan and the production company of Chicago Fire will assume the responsibility and liability involved in closing of the Amstutz Highway for this purpose. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Waukegan will be responsible for the direction, protection, and regulation of traffic during the time this temporary detour is in place, and all liabilities for damages by the closure of the Amstutz Highway, and that all weather detours will be maintained conspicuously marked and jurisdictionally police-patrolled for the benefit of traffic deviation from the Amstutz Expressway. Further be resolved that a suitably-imbossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented, sent to the permitting office of the Illinois Department of Transportation in order to give their authorization for this closure, dated the 17th day of September 2012.
Let's go ahead and do a motion on this. A motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. We had a chance to meet with the producers the other day. Seems like a nice group. Just so everybody understands, the city of Waukegan does not have any out-of-pocket expenses for these types of things. The cost for our police and any fire protection that's necessary, as well as public works crews is all paid for by the producers of the television show. So it is not being underwritten in any way. It's, it's all covered. And it's great to have this sort of coverage coming up to Waukegan, these people coming up here. And when you do business with them and treat them well, they're going to want to come back. And I think that we've shown that in the years, that while we're not Hollywood, we've attracted a few pretty good productions to the city of Waukegan. So this will be exciting to watch. Next, we have Committee Reports and Motions. First up is Alderman Conken and Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items. We met last week, Monday, and again, we had a special meeting this, before the council meeting today at 6:45. Item A, we had a request from 24 Washington Park in Alderman Beedling's Ward for handicap parking. Code ordinances, Chapter 21, Section 21-122 allows for limited parking. So in that respect, I move to draft an ordinance that reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence, commonly known as 24 Washington Park.
Oh, okay. Apparently, this ordinance has been drafted. So what I would like to do is Alderman Conken, if you would make a motion to amend this to approve, and then we'll get the second to approve by Alderman Beedling. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. So before us, we will then need to go ahead and vote on it as amended. So Alderman Conken, draft an ord, or accept an ordinance to reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence, commonly known as 24 Washington Park. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Beedling. All, roll call, please. Roll call.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B, the city of Waukegan Police Department received a request for a crosswalk at Genesee and Water Street. After the appropriate research was done, I move to approve a crosswalk at Genesee and Water with the appropriate signage installed.
We have the motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
And that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conken and your committee for all the hard work you do. Next, we have the Finance Committee, Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening at, was it 6:00, 5:30? It was a little later. But anyway, first item on our agenda, Item A, motion to authorize the Director of Finance and Administration to disburse $180,991.11 to fund the city's allocated share of the remaining 2012 budgeted expenditure for the Yeoman Creek Superfund Site Remedial Action. Budget Code 100910124403. An aye so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B, a motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to RRP Incorporated, any amount not to exceed $42,900 for fire station renewal and replacement. Budget Code 307130726392. An aye so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseau.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B, a motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to RRP Incorporated, any amount not to exceed $42,900 for fire station renewal and replacement. Budget Code 307130726392. An aye so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Conken. Do we have any comments or questions?
Chief.
Yes, Alderman Beedling. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, I was looking down. I didn't see you approach the...
In regards to this, RRP was the company that solicited the bids for the city of Waukegan.
This is something that I think we should do a roll call. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Conken and your committee for all the hard work you do. Next, we have the Finance Committee, Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening at, was it six, 5:30? It was a little later. But anyway, first item on our agenda, item A, motion to authorize the Director of Finance and Administration to disburse $180,991.11 to fund the city's allocated share of the remaining 2012 budgeted expenditure for the Yeoman Creek Superfund Site Remedial Action. Budget code 100910124403, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item B, a motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to RRP Incorporated, any amount not to exceed $42,900 for fire station renewal and replacement. Budget code 307130726392, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Conken. Do we have any comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Beedling. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, I was looking down. I didn't see you approach the.
In regards to this, RRP was the company that solicited the bids for the city of Waukegan. That should be Ernie Peterson Plumbing, which is a Waukegan company, and this is an AFG grant, which is a, an 80/20 grant. So we're actually paying the total, but that's 80% by the federal government, 20% by the city of Waukegan.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. We need a motion to amend as presented. A motion by Alderman, excuse me, Conken, seconded by Alderman Newsome, to amend item B, to read motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Ernie Peterson Plumbing, in an amount not to exceed $42,900 for fire station renewal and replacement. Budget code 307130726392, and I so move. And again, we have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Conken. And again, comments or questions?
This is.
Yes, Alderman Beedling.
This is for sprinklers?
This is actually for the water line for the sprinklers. This is the water line from the road to the building.
Is this, I'm just curious, by law, do we have to put the sprinklers in there?
By NFPA standards, firehouses, public buildings should be supplied with sprinkler systems. We applied for the grant, and we were awarded the grant. This was one of 16,000 grants that were applied for by the nation, and we were one of the lucky cities to receive the grant.
Which pays off. Thank you.
It's a pretty good deal.
And we don't want our guys sleeping in an environment where they're not covered by the same standards we ask others to be covered by. So roll call on that, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item C, motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Jewel Electric Incorporated out of Waukegan, Illinois, in the amount not, no, 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 but in the amount not to exceed $1,685 for fire station renewal and replacement. Budget code 307130726392, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Conken. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item D, motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Robinson Heating and Cooling Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $7,798 for fire station renewal and replacement. Budget code 307130726392, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Conken. Comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Beedling.
I asked this question in committee. I see, you know, they advertise these floor units. I mean, did you guys look into that to see if that would be adequate? Because you're operating with vans right now.
This, this unit is a single-room air conditioning unit for the computer room, and this was awarded through the state. This is a 100% grant from the state of Illinois. It's a DCEO grant. And yes, we've, we researched this, and this will save hundreds of hundreds of thousands of dollars if the servers in the computer room goes down. So we've been attempting to acquire this air conditioning unit in this grant for the last four years, and it was awarded finally this year to us.
Yes, thank you, Chief.
I don't mean to be a pain in the neck, but you know, our state is bankrupt, and I just don't understand, where they think they get all the money to pass on all these grants for everything.
Well, we'll take it, but if I might answer, though, too, from a technical standpoint, these machines have to be kept cool. Servers have to be kept cool. The environment, they do not operate well in heat. The boards will fail quicker, the processors will fail quicker, and they actually will grow less efficient the hotter they get. So it really is something that, considering what we're putting in compared to replacing components of the computer system, I think we would be behind the eight ball on that one if we didn't do this.
You're changing the servers in there?
Having to, if they fail on us, we would have to.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Tempest.
Your computer expert, Ron's been quite concerned about this for a number of years. I know that, because I've spoken with him many times. So this is going to solve the problem.
It will, it will increase the longevity of our equipment, the computer equipment, the cooler it is. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item F, motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Kelso Burnett Company, in the amount not to exceed $165,907 for sanitary sewer lift station repairs. Budget code 555916027018, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Do we have comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item G, motion to authorize the Director of Public Relations and Marketing to enter into a contract with Civic Plus, in the amount not to exceed $91,400 through April 30th, 2015, for website consolidation, upgrade, and redesign. Funding as follows. Fiscal year 2012-2013, $67,000. Budget code 307130726492. Fiscal year 2013-14, the amount of $12,200. Budget code 100106024438. Fiscal year 14-15, the amount of $12,200. Budget code 100-106024438, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Beedling.
I voted no on this in the committee. I have one question. Does this track how many users access all the different little bells and whistles on there on a daily basis, so we know if we're not just buying a bunch of junk we're not going to, nobody's using?
I'm getting the information, yes.
Well, I'll give you the answer from the client. That is one of the basic requirements that we would want the vendor to provide to us, so that we can ensure that there's consistent delivery of messages and information that we know is most popular. If it's not trackable, it has no function for us. And I'll let Brian address that.
Sure. Thanks, David. The website does utilize tracking. We use Google Analytics, specifically Google Urchin. It will show all devices accessing the website. It'll show pages that are being accessed. It'll also show documents that are being viewed. Also, the modules, as we talked about in the Finance Committee meeting, do show who is using them as well.
Who would I ask to stay updated on the popularity of this thing?
Well, we'll have information coming in once it's on live. That information will be coming in and provided to us through the designer host of the website, however you want to describe that. It, but yeah, it will be, it'll be ongoing.
I don't mean to seem, sound anti-tech technology, but seems like, you know, every time they have something new, after a few years, they change it, and then you have to learn something different. And that's the reason why most people in the computer industry, as you get older, you just get tired of learning new operating systems, and they end up retiring after a while, because you just can't take it anymore.
Well, these will work across multiple operating systems. I mean, if Windows 8 comes out next year, it won't be an issue where they have to relearn the use of the website. It's designed to be, what's the right word for it, backward-looking as well as forward-looking? So that somebody has a computer with Windows, an old Windows in it, they'll be able to go on our website. They won't have to do anything special. It's just like accessing any page, that if you go on AOL, you decide you want to go on the DOD or whatever it might be, it's the same, it works the same way. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Alderman. Yes, Alderman Rivera.
I've got a couple of questions. And I did speak with Ron, our expert computer guy, no question about it. I really wanted to get his opinion on it. Very favorable, as I am favorable to this, but I do have a couple of questions, though. You know, obviously, being, this being a government website, you know, obviously, there's got to be some sort of guidelines on the usage of the website in terms of, for example, civic organizations, you know. One of, that's one of the questions that I wanted to ask you. Can civic organizations, would they be able to use this? You know, and that was one of the questions I wanted to know. The other one is, other than paying your bills, you know, things of that nature, which is going to be a good thing, you know, for the city, can this website be used for profitability as well?
I'll take your first question. I'll probably be able to answer your second question, too. Ron has some technical expertise that he could loan to us as well. This will primarily be a form and function of the website where we will rely upon interactivity. This is the public, it's the public's website. We will demand interaction with that, and they will as well. So it's not only a portal for this interaction, but it's also a way for us to get feedback. It has no value to us if it's not being used in a backward and forward method.
Okay.
We really intend that this information that will be available is going to be provided in a more dynamic and customer-friendly way, in a way also in which it's easy to understand and comprehend, so a novice could go to our website and figure out how to pay for their vehicle tag, how to pay for their water bill. Right now, it's a bit disjointed, because we have different services trying to provide that. And sometimes, in some ways, the information is not available. But the ownership of this website will be based on the population of the community, and we will also invite the community groups that are having events to come in and create calendar items, and what we call self-populating these services. So the content can also be created by the consumer, or our customer here in Waukegan, and the general public. To the end of the second question.
Hold on, before you go to this second question. My concern is favorability. That is the only concern that I have, that if one organization is allowed to showcase their events, I'm just concerned that there may be some favoritism to this.
Sure, sure.
And that's, surely, that's not what we want.
No, of course not.
With this website.
Of course not. Any organization within the community will have the ability to log on to the website and upload the content. There will be a first-tier editorial, I guess, review by probably Ron and I, we would have the overall administration and infrastructure of the website. So we would be able to approve those items. So if someone puts in an erroneous entry that does not exist, or for a location that doesn't exist, in some ways, to either inflame or to serve as an erroneous listing, we would not allow that to populate this.
Okay, good. And that answers some of my, my other question, which was security.
Security.
Thank you.
Yes. And then, the second part of your question had to do with commerce. Ron has information that he'll probably share with you right now, about the limitations of what a government website could do. Of course, our frontline services are based on our commodities, our water, our vehicle tags, our permits, our applications. Those are all things that we are prepared to allow for e-commerce. But there are a whole nother level of things that we would not allow, and Ron, would you like to tell us about what those are?
Sure, Dave. I'm Ron Gardella, IT Director here at the city.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Say again?
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Ron Gardella.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. SB. Alderman Rivera, excellent question. The problem we have with websites is they become corrupt or abused or what have you. The government websites have to come under the guise of the GSA, which is this big federal and government agency that says you cannot use them for specific things. If we're advertising for, say, a restaurant down the street, and we don't advertise for another restaurant, we're throwing favoritism, and that's strictly forbidden. We can't do that. So yes, there's going to, there are rules in place that say, that's not allowed. And the GSA is very specific about things we can't do. Advertise for private individuals, firms, organizations, corporations, I'm sorry, or imply in any manner that we are favoring one organization above another. We're going to stay out of that business.
Good.
We have to. Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes. Yes, it does. I just, basically, I just wanted to make sure that the public, you know, realizes that. I'm quite sure there are some serious guidelines go along with these, you know, especially governmental websites. I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of this, so. Appreciate the answers, and I appreciate your expertise, Ron.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Are we in the middle of roll call? Were we in the middle of roll call?
I don't think so. I think we were still having comments. So we're ready for the roll call. We have the motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Item H, motion to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract with Civic Plus in the amount not to exceed $67,000 for ADA improvements. Budget Code 307-130726492, and ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions? I think pretty much everything was addressed in that last item. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
That concludes the finance.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom and your committee for all the hard work they do. I need to ask just for a five-minute recess, if you could, please, and we'll be right back. Thank you.
I guess the major calls.
Great. Everybody back? Okay, thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Moiseo.
Thank you. Item A, award to ditch maintenance contractor to low-qualified bidder Mark Mead Escavators of Grayslake, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $80,280. Funds are available for this contract in line item 100911024438, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Item B, award to CDBG Sidewalk Contractor to low-qualified bidder Globe Construction of Addison, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $116,500. Funds are available in line item 245550427636, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Item C, award to contract for lift station generators to the low-qualified bidder Kelso Burnett Company of Gurnee, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $165,907. Funds are available for this contract using bond proceeds in line item 555916027018, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Thank you. Item D, award to 2012 Water Main Replacement Contract to the low-qualified bidder Burger Escavating of Wakanda, Illinois. Due to not enough funding to do the entire base bid project, we are going to do two of the three pieces of the base bid. The cost of these two water mains is $301,165. Funds are available for this project using bond proceeds in line item 555916027043, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Eyes have it.
And item E, draft an ordinance for the purpose of updating our current watershed development ordinance. There have been 94 changes to the ordinance, and to keep in compliance with the Lake County watershed development ordinance, we need to incorporate these changes to our ordinance, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Voice vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. That concludes Public Works for this evening. Thank you, Alderman Moiseo, for all the hard work. Next, we come to old business. Item A, this is a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to approve the appointment of Randy D. Podolsky to the Port Authority Board. This is requested and been held over by Alderman Cunningham. I did speak with Mr. Podolsky last week. He is still desirous of serving for the city of Waukegan and providing his expertise. We would like to just put up for everybody's information just a little bit about his background, and Dave is going to begin a little presentation And I should say, Mr. Podolsky was not able to attend. He was in attendance two weeks ago, but he was unable to come tonight, and he does send his apologies. It is for Mr. Podolsky, as you'll see in a moment on this graphic. He has a background with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, as well as serving in the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, Guardians of Lake Michigan. He was actually the past Commodore of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, Waukegan Flotilla 41-5. He serves in this volunteer capacity for the U.S. Coast Guard, sailing out of the Waukegan Harbor since 1991, which is a combined service of 21 years. He was the recipient of the Meritorious Service Award, and he was also the founder of the Waukegan Water Safety Association. His professional experience includes 40 years of experience in real estate investment, the founder, managing principal, and asset manager of Podolsky North Star Real Estate Management, and has completed over 7 million square feet of industrial and office development and redevelopment projects. His clients have included United Airlines, Julosko, Allstate, Wilson Sports, First Midwest Bank, JP Morgan Chase, and PNC Bank. He was born and raised in Chicago, Illinois, and lives in Lincolnshire with his wife Wendy, has had a boat in the Waukegan Harbor since 1987, which is a total time of 25 years. He enjoys scuba diving and recreational boating, and he and his wife have three children, Melissa, who is a real estate broker, Ryan, a captain in the United States Marine Corps, retired, and Natalie, who is a registered nurse. These were just some of the qualifications that we saw that we felt made him a very attractive person to have, serving and volunteering to help the city of Waukegan. It's something that, again, you know, when we were, when we're looking for people to serve, we're not just looking what that one person brings, but who, what did they bring with them in their associations and friendships and in their background. And that's why we felt that he, when he said he was willing to serve and help the city of Waukegan through the Port Authority, we really did feel he was the strongest candidate that we had on the table at the time. I do acknowledge that some of the Aldermen, Alderman Tempest I've spoken with, and others are not really comfortable with the fact that he does not live in Waukegan, but we, as I said, we really were looking for the best to be able to bring to this, to this position. I think his background will come, will be of value to us as we move forward on the lakefront redevelopment, as the Port Authority moves with their lakefront redevelopment, which is going to be happening, probably coinciding with a lot of the work that we do, and having someone with that background was, just seemed like such a plus for us. And our appointment, he's our guy, if we, if you do approve the appointment tonight, so he's somebody that I feel will be able to talk to about more issues than just his, just the Port Authority. His background seems to be something that we would probably be able to tap to in a lot, tap into in a lot of different ways. But we have it before us tonight. Do we have any further comments or questions regarding the appointment?
I do.
Yes, Alderman Valco.
While I listen and I respect everyone's comments, last council meeting, I think it's time that we put our differences aside, starting with this tonight. And I know we all have our, our concerns about whether people live in the city or whether they don't live in the city, and a lot of us addressed that last council meeting or the meeting before. You know, it's my personal opinion that this city takes one step forward and then constantly takes two steps backwards. After the last council meeting, I was on my way home, and I thought about when I was a police officer, and I thought about going down to the harbor, and I thought about looking at the boats, and I thought about when we were patrolling down there, and I said, you know what? There wasn't too many boats that had Waukegan on it. So I requested and got from the Port Authority, out of the 527 slips that are active, only 28 are Waukegan residents. The big-time hitters are Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, Chicago, and a couple of the other ones. So what I'm saying is, let's give the best person a shot, and I'll take a passage from the late Neil Armstrong. Let's tonight take one small step for this council and one giant leap for the city of Waukegan. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Your Honor...
Yes, Alderman Cunningham.
You know, I don't think any of us are looking to take any steps backwards. I think when we speak, we all speak with the understanding that we are looking to move this community forward. I just think, as we take a look at a man with his credentials, a man with all the things that he brings from a professional standpoint in real estate development, obviously with his military background, it just behooves me how the governor could not want to appoint a person of this nature to be a part of our board, so then you can make that recommendation to that local person. And as I was doing my own investigation into the Port Authority, there seems to be a major disconnect between the boaters, the boaters versus the Port District. Boaters feel they just don't have any say-so. They don't have any, any input as to what is the best interest of the, you know, of the harbor. So that's, this, this is the reason, when I spoke to the gentleman who I emailed out, Mr. Rick Riddle, a boater, he has no interest in politics, no interest, he just loves to be out on the water. That is the kind of person you need on that board, so he can then speak on behalf, not only the boaters, but for us. This doesn't discontinue the, you know, the skill set that this gentleman brings. I don't think no one can question that, at least I can't. So, you know, with that being said, I would like for you to move this gentleman's name to the governor's office because of your long-term relationship, continue to build with the governor, have him appointed on behalf of the governor's appointment, and let you continue to concentrate on the local appointments. That's my personal opinion. And by no means I am looking to say Waukegan is taking steps backwards, because I don't ever think that, whatever happened, as long as I'm Alderman, I'm making decisions. But I think what we're doing is just making sure that we have a voice on these boards that speaks for us. And sometimes, that voice get lost when you start bringing individuals who don't, I was just talking to one of the department heads earlier, who grew up four blocks away, who was on North Avenue, who, who went to North School. If you don't have that feeling of that understanding, it's tough for you to make decisions about North Avenue, Marcus Street, you know, Castle Crest, et cetera. And that's what I bring. I'm not ashamed of it. I'm gonna believe in that to the day I die. This man is probably one of the best examples where he should be appointed by the governor of the state of Illinois, and we should concentrate on what we do best. Stick to us local folks. And if we need his help, I don't see no reason why a person who spends this much time, been on the boat, on the boat in Waukegan since 1977, we can get his input anytime we need Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Your Honor.
Anything further? Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
Along the same lines, I see here I have the, the Port District, and the Port District is more than the Port District, it's also the airport, and does more than just take care of the water, the harbor. They have a lease with Gypsum, correct? The lease with Gypsum is also through the Port District, correct?
Actually, their property is owned by, I think it's Canadian National, and they lease to Canadian National.
Okay.
I think the cement company, if I remember correctly, does lease from the Port Authority.
So the Port District has some land down there that is directly, would be, would have impact on Waukegan. I see the governor has appointments of Dale Johnson, Mike Milius, and George Torres. He has three. Milius and Torres both live in Waukegan. I don't know where Mr. Johnson lives, but Mr. Torres's term is up in '13, and then the people from Waukegan that are appointed by the mayor, Mr. Leggett, Mr. Benavides, and Mr. Benning, and Mr. Bagdal has gone off, so we have this opening. I would think that the reason it was written this way is so that the mayor would have four people from Waukegan, and the governor would have three from wherever he thought he needed to have them from, with input obviously from the mayor, and maybe the senator, and the representative, and whoever else. Of course, Torres and Milius live in Waukegan, so the governor went with Waukegan people, I'm sure on somebody's recommendation. But it just does not sit well with me to put people not from Waukegan on any type of committee that is supposed to be of Waukegan. Obviously, this man's resume is impeccable, and it just does not, it just does not sit well with me. On this or any other thing, if they're good enough to cast a vote in Waukegan, and good enough to pay all of our salaries up here with their tax dollars, then they're good enough for us to put them, when it's our choice, to put them on commissions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Well, I think what we'll do is we'll call for the, the roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conkin.
Pass.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you. I honestly, give us a chance to prove that this is gonna, I think he's gonna bring some great things to the Port Authority, and let's, let's give him a chance to prove that he really wants to be part of this. So, thank you very much, and I do, it's not that I'm not unsympathetic to the feelings at all of your concern, so please don't think that. We just felt this was just such a top-notch opportunity that we wanted to grab it, so thank you, everybody. Next before us, we have reports and communications. Item A, the Waukegan Fire Pension Board required reporting to municipality per statute 40 ILCS 5/4-134 for fiscal year end April 30th, 2012. Now, you know, to be honest with you, is this something that we need to accept as a roll call or a voice vote?
You'd probably make a motion received for a form if it was given.
Okay.
You could probably do, since it's a pension act, I'd accept it.
Just roll call, okay. Motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Comments or questions?
Are we gonna, do we have a person to?
I'm not sure. Who's presenting?
Do we need?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tina. I, I'm looking down so much at this, I didn't see you move up there. I apologize.
I haven't put the heels on.
Throw things at me when you, yeah, I'm sorry.
If you don't want us to read it into the record, that's fine. Okay. Lieutenant Welsh is here, too. He's president of the Fire Pension Board, so if you have any questions. This report is required to annually be presented, or actually, it's just to be reported to the city council at the end of the most recently completed fiscal year, and it has to be made to the council before we may do the tax levy process, so that's why we're doing it before you tonight, for the fire. And both of these reports were provided to you in your packets, and we've also posted them on our website under the finance page as well. The fire trust assets as of April 30th, 2012, the actuarial value of that was $48.9 million. Projecting forward, the estimated receipts for next fiscal year, which will be the levy that we'll be talking about next month, participant contributions are projected at $871,000, and the employer contribution at $3.8 million. The amount that will be required in the subsequent fiscal year to pay all the pensions and other obligations is estimated to be $5.7 million for the year, and to meet the annual requirements of the fund under state statute will be $4.7 million. The net income received from investments this past fiscal year was $2.1 million, with an investment return of 3.54 percent. Last year's return was 11.53 percent. The actuarial assumptions are always 7 percent by statute. The total number of active employees that we currently have contributing to the plan are 111, and our disbursements in the past year for regular retirement pension was to 62 individuals for $2.8 million. 27 received a disability pension of $1 million, and survivor and children benefits were paid to 26 individuals for $735,000. The funded ratio of the fund right now is 48.97 percent.
What was it?
48.97 percent.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Alderman Moiseo, and then Alderman Bedling?
The pension board is made up of three, what is it, is it three firemen and two of your appointments, Mayor?
Yes.
And the pension boards, both of them, do spend taxpayers' money because we levy the funds and then give it to them, correct? And then who invests those funds? Does the board invest it, or do they hire somebody to invest it?
We hire various firms to manage our fund for us. First Midwest does a lot for us, William Blair.
Okay.
Sort of place like that. We have also a firm called Marquette Associates that keeps tabs on all of our investment firms and makes sure they follow our investment policy.
Okay. And this is not...
And you have, they have a professional accounting firm as well, that does all of their bookkeeping, their accounting, and also their benefits administration, water vacuuming.
And this is for a much larger audience in Springfield, and this is nothing against the present pension boards, but basically, you have people that have not been elected by the taxpayers that are spending taxpayer money. If they have bad investments, which may be no fault of the three, the three and two of the five-person board, maybe who they hire, have bad investments, they come back to this body and say, "We need more money." And I truly believe in my heart that we need to honor our pension promises. Someone works 30 years or 25 years for the city, and that's the deal that they went into, that needs to be honored. But the problem is, is that there's no accountability for a bad investment. They can just come back to us and say, "Well, we didn't get a very good return. You got 3% this year, correct? The last year you got 11%." What if it's a couple of years we did, we got even worse, correct? Again, probably no fault of the five-person board. That's what they hire somebody to do, but it's, the system is wrong because you are allowing people that don't have to answer to taxpayers, spending taxpayers' money. And again, I'm not blaming the people on the board. They're... And again, I'm not blaming the people on the board. They're there to try to set policy, to try to, but if things go wrong, they come back to us and say, "We need more money." So it's a systems problem that needs to be fixed in Springfield. Thank you.
If I might address that, you know, I've been an employee of the city of Waukegan for over 20 years. I've contributed nearly 10% of every paycheck into this pension fund. This is my life savings. This is it. So I do have a vested interest in making sure we have very good investment returns. We have policies in place that if one of our investment firms does not do well, they will be removed. We address this, and it's, I don't think your concerns are well-fond. I think you can rest easy on that. I am very concerned about how well this fund does. And if there's an investment firm not doing well for us, they will be fired. And we actually did recently fire a firm. So please, please understand. I have, I'm very vested in this.
I'm on the same boat as a teacher. I mean, I'm in TRS, and if that thing goes, that's my life savings, and if that goes belly up the same, so we're all in the same boat as the public pension employees. It's just that I think there needs to be, and again, it's no fault, you guys are playing by the rules and the system that's been set up. So it's not your fault, it's the people in Springfield. There needs to be some type of fix on it. I don't know what it is, that's for somebody a little smarter than me, but there needs to be a fix.
And also, when you think, if we do have a down year or something, remember, we do rolling five-year averages and stuff. It's not, we do this so that you can budget, you know, we don't just, if we're up 20% one year and down 5% the next, you can't budget for that. That's why we use the rolling five-year thing. How else, you couldn't do it any other way. You couldn't. So there's built-in buffers there, so that you, you're not gonna have that up and down, and have no idea what your contribution's gonna be, if that helps.
No. I just, like I said, I'm not blaming the five pension board, especially the guys that are the active employees down there, because that's like managing their own 401K or their own retirement. They have to make sure it's managed. Now, the other two people, I don't know. You know, the other two that are appointed by the mayor, they could or could not be taxpayers the way we're going.
They may or may not be. There is no requirement regarding the American point.
They could be Waukegan residents, they could be somebody else. Don't really care what the tax rate in Waukegan is. Don't care.
That is the whole thing that I, like you say, I cannot address.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you gonna do the police one, too? Oh, okay. I got a question.
Can I ask one question?
Take a motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to accept the report as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, the Waukegan Police Pension Board required reporting to municipality per 40 ILCS 5/4-134 for fiscal year end April 30th, 2012. Tina?
President Officer Marty Van Anroy asked that I present this report for him tonight. He apologizes that he could not be here. The total trust assets for the actuarial value of that is $61.8 million. The estimated receipts for the succeeding fiscal year for participant contributions will be $1.1 million, and employer contributions $5.6. The estimated amount required for the succeeding year to pay all pensions and obligations is $6.7 million, and to meet the annual requirements of the fund per state statute are $6.8 million. The total net income received for the fiscal year was $1.5 million with an actual investment return of $1.83, following last year's investment return of 11.48. The total number of active employees that are financially contributing to the fund is 133. Dispersments and regular retirement pensions were made to 85 individuals for $4.1 million. Disability pensions, 27 individuals of $1.1 million, and survivor and children benefits to 16 individuals for $538,000. The police pension fund funded ratio is 43.68%.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Alderman Valco.
I could've done this with the firemen also, but I just had mine inked out. On the police pension, as well as the fire pension, under your, under the subheading "Required Reporting," you've got "As of 4/30/12." So far, so good. Fiscal year end, okay? Under four, under four, third line down, it says fiscal year ending 4/30/2011. And then, on your actuarial statement signed by Tepfer, it says, this is "As of April 30th, 2013," and all the numbers jive. So, is it from 11, is it from 12, or is it from 13? Because the $5.6 million from 12 is the same as for 13.
I will pass along your concerns to the pension fund's actuary. I do not prepare these reports. I'm simply remitting them to you on behalf of the pension funds. This is for the fiscal year end, 4/30/2012. This will be for the levy that is for fiscal year 13, 14. So that could be where some of the dates are from. But this is for fiscal year end 2012, and it was probably just a typo on some of those dates that you referenced. I'll have him make those corrections, and we'll post the corrected one on the city's website.
That would be my only concern, because the $5.6 million, April 30th, 2013, is the same as 2011.
Well, we haven't had 2013 yet, so it couldn't be for that. We haven't reached that. This is for fiscal year end 2012, so.
Correct.
I will contact him and have him send a updated report, and I'll post it on the city's website.
Yeah, okay, and just let me know, because it's 11, 12, and 13 are the same numbers. It just doesn't make sense, that's all. Thanks, Tina.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman.
Would we need a motion?
Yes, we would need a motion to-
Waukegan Fire Pension Board required reporting, Mr. West, present a city council and ask that it be placed on file.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman May. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Thank you, Tina.
Then we need to make the same motion for the move that the Waukegan Police Pension Board required reporting to municipalities per-
Oh, we, you just, actually, we voted on item A already.
Did you?
Yeah, so we just voted on B. Yeah, we're good. We're set. Thank you, Alderman.
I wanna make sure the minutes are-
Yep, yep, there and there.
Shows that it was verbal and written.
Yep. Thank you. Item 10, new business recommended actions by corporation council. Item A, approval of payroll dated September 5th, 2012, in the amount of $1,297,771.96. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item C, motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Moiseo to approve all block parties. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Item D, motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May to accept and place on file the treasurer's report for the month of August 2012. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Item E, we have the annual investment policy review by Treasurer John Schwab. Dr. Schwab, do you have any comments?
Yes, this has been reviewed. Everybody up here has a copy, if there's any questions, all. It should be posted on the website, and if not, it will be posted at our website shortly. Any questions, please call my office, and we'll be glad to review any portion of the policy in question.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May to receive the annual investment policy review presented by Treasurer John Schwab. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Next, we move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item A, resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 2240 Linden Avenue. Take a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to approve. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 1216 Hickory Street. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Clerk, Alderman's time, please.
Alderman Tempest. Pass. Alderman May.
Thank you. I wanted to congratulate Main Street, which I'm proud to be a part of, on their award at the state convention for Art Walk. But I do feel it's very necessary to mention that 18 months ago, when the idea for Art Walk came about, there was a little posse of people headed by David Motley from the city of Waukegan, along with the business owners on South Genesee Street, and the various artists from Waukegan, and they all share in this award with Waukegan Main Street. And so I just wanted to make mention of that because they deserve the honor just as much as Main Street does. So thank you to everyone who is involved with that. I want to talk about the beach really quick. I want to thank the Friends of Waukegan Beach and the Alliance for the Great Lakes. This weekend, we cleaned the beach on Saturday morning with students from Waukegan High School and from St. Martin de Porres High School. We had approximately 50 people show up. The good news is the beach is a lot cleaner than it used to be, but there's still work to be done, so thank you, everyone, for participating in that effort. And I also like to comment and thank Mr. Hawn for addressing the council tonight. As the mayor knows, this is a great concern for the Friends of Waukegan Beach and myself, and we have been in discussions with the county regarding the safety issues at the beach, so be rest assured that we will be addressing this issue. I also want to shout out to Public Works tonight. The Genesee Street project is moving along, and it's a monster of a project. I mean, there's days, I'm sure they show up, and they don't know what they were gonna find underneath that street, but it's going along beautifully, and along with all the Tiff projects that Mr. Hagerty has been facilitating, the department's really taken on a lot of work in a short amount of time, and I just want to congratulate them and commend them on their great work during this construction season. And that's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Valco. For those of the citizens that live in the northwest section of Waukegan, Delaney Road will be closed from the 24th of this month till the 5th of October for water and sewer work that the city and the county is doing. Also, I went down, I was on the website first for the Genesee Theater, and then went down to buy some tickets, and I'm really surprised, there's three pages now of stuff that's coming to the Genesee Theater. At the Main Street luncheon, I said congratulations to the manager of the theater, but I would be remiss without saying thank you to our chief sponsor, Uline, Mid-Generation, First Midwest, and obviously, the Friends of the Genesee Theater for the fine jobs that they're doing, bringing the new acts to downtown Waukegan. That's all I have, sir. Alderman Rivera. All right, I want to thank also Public Works for the work that they're doing on River Road. There's some sewer work that they've been doing there. Little inconvenience, but that's a job that needed to be done. So I want to thank the work, you know, that the contractor's doing out there, too, as well. Also, I want to bring up, you know, an issue that I've been getting a lot of calls in regards to, you know, the business out there on Green Bay Road, organic matters. You know, I know that they've been, you know, it's a problem with, you know, the odor that's coming from there, and I am trying to address it. I've spoken to our Dave Marion as well. I'm gonna speak with Russ as well, he knows about it, but I think that, you know, maybe there is something that could be done, other than putting the chemicals, you know, that they're putting on the pile that they have there. Maybe it's not, you know, neutralizing it enough. But I'm gonna suggest something, maybe, you know, they need to house, build something where they can, you know, at least house the materials that they're using to, you know, create mulch with. Maybe that'll tone down the odor. I don't know, but I'm looking into something that we can do, so. I just wanted to let the public know, you know, if they're watching this, that, you know, we're trying to do something there to neutralize the odor. So, thank you very much. Alderman Cunningham.
I have three things I want to quickly go over. One, I do want to congratulate Pierce Flores for 80 years of service in the city of Waukegan. It's kind of unremarkable that a business has been in our city that long, in downtown Waukegan, so I want to congratulate them and that team over there. I want to speak to the lakefront or the beach problem. I know my mom has been working with Sheriff Mark Kern to see if we can increase patrol on our beach. I think a lot of those, the boats were moved out to the Chain of Lakes, and I think they brought one back, if trying to do some service, and I think Lisa was a part of that as well.
They have one boat that works.
Oh, they don't have a boat that works. They have one boat that works. I know they were trying to work on some things, but as Mark and others have really come out, you know, it really just lets us know that our beach is really in high demand, and now that I think other people found out that the Chain of Lakes is getting so much pressure, they're kind of moving themselves on the way to us. So keeping an eye on that would definitely be a plus for us. My last but not least, I do want to speak tonight, two things. One, on some comments we made earlier regarding the increase of police presence on certain parts, not of just the First Ward, but the city of Waukegan. As we know, there has been an increase of, I think, opportunist criminals within our presence. The unfortunate part is, those individuals take advantage of good, law-abiding citizens. So when that happens, our police department has to take the necessary steps to try to mitigate those things, and let them know that we run the show. We can't allow criminals to try to overtake our community by using fear and tactics. Now, the situations that happens on one side of our city is different than happens on the other side. It has been a long, long problem that we've had, unfortunately, young men, the vast majority of them are black, they're not working. I, too, share the same concerns that Mr. Blanks shares. And I voiced my opinion about that when it first came here. Pepper Construction has done nothing for us to bring bodies to this, to that job site over there. Nothing. What I would like to do is see how we can all work together to make sure the next people that come in here understand that you won't get money from the city unless you start bringing in folks from the city. And it goes back to my point earlier, when we start saying it's okay for people from the outside to hold various positions and to do various things, it becomes an okay type of environment. See, Pepper Construction don't understand. They don't care. And they're not supposed to. I'm not mad at them. But we're supposed to hold that down. So I share your concerns on that. You had your turn, let me get mine. However, black boys, white boys, black girls, white girls, Latinos, we cannot have criminal elements walking around harming and putting in danger good, law-abiding citizens. What the police department did over the last one and a half, two weeks, is just let them understand that there is a police presence to serve and protect. To serve and protect, not to intimidate. What the police department did over the last one and a half, two weeks, is just let them understand that there is a police presence to serve and protect. To serve and protect. Not to intimidate. And if we do have officers who are out there and not doing what they're supposed to do, the best process is to inform the chief or whomever that person is in the police department. Let them know who they are, let them investigate, and we will handle them accordingly. But we cannot. I repeat this. And as a young man growing up in the projects, where I used to see police officers come in and not prevent things from happening, just came in when things already happened. I have too many young boys and girls now in common school. I think we're at about five hundred. You get five hundred little, little boys and girls going back and forth. We cannot have people just acting like they can do whatever, when they, whenever they want to. We cannot. I'm a firm believer of that, and I'm going to stick to it. Now, if somebody thinks their civil rights are being, you know, uh, 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 being violated, get to us. Let us know. But shame on you if you don't tell me, and you just complain amongst yourselves. But typically, homeowners are the ones who are the benefactors when they see their police presence. Because let me tell you what I get. Why aren't the police over here? They don't care about us. They just let anybody come and down here where, where I live at. That's what I hear from homeowners. The last time I checked, that's who pays the bills. So if you do have a problem with that, I like your presence out there, I think you're doing a great job with our young people. But we cannot have young men, I don't care if they're black or white, you had the word "black," African-American, whatever you want to call them. We can't allow them to think it's okay to intimidate. And yes, we have some young men who sometimes tries to intimidate. But we have to let them know, we have a hundred and eighty-six police officers, we have two hundred and fifty, uh, sheriff officers, we have a state's attorney's office, who is not going to allow you to do that. And you won't find a bigger person on the face of this earth, Chris, who's going to fight you when it comes to giving dollars to go outside this city. You just won't. I would challenge the mayor, his staff, or anybody, because those dollars that we use for this city comes from black people who own homes, white people who own homes, and Latinos.
Want to vote? Call your name. Call citizen's name.
Sam, please. Carry on.
Thank you. So with that being said, let's form a group, Chris. I'm calling your name because I want you to, I want you to share in with this. Let's form a group to make sure when these job opportunities, as you did, and others did, at the school district. What did they do? They broke a big job up into small parts where everybody got involved.
I invited you several times, you never make it. Two hours before.
That's, Chris, that's the last comment you'll make. Please. Thank you.
This is where this thing starts at. We can use what the school district did as an example to move forward. We have started some things in the City of Waukegan, but it needs to get better. It's not perfect. But I will not ever allow a criminal activity, or criminal-minded people, to try taking over good, law-abiding citizens. I went through that for twenty-two years as a resident in the First Ward, where I used to see that all the time. Now that I'm the leader, those good people, which are ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of them, will be the voice that speaks up here. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. Uh, the police department has given me a list of the new community liaison officers that we have for the wards. Uh, just like to announce that Officer Jerick will be in the First Ward, Officer Begay in the Second Ward, Officer White in the Third, Officer Drexler in the Fourth Ward, Officer Orozco in the Fifth. In the Sixth and the Ninth will be Officer Heard, Officer Newman in the Seventh, and Officer Van Hugen in the Eighth. So, uh, to the Alderman and to everybody in the public, those are your new community liaison officers, and please contact, uh, I believe your Alderman would be able to get you their phone numbers, or even the City of Waukegan. Uh, just call the police department, and they can get you the numbers for their, uh, liaison officers, and hopefully, uh, we'll have, everybody can have a good relationship. I, the officer I have, uh, is outstanding. Anytime there's an issue, uh, problems taken care of in a prompt manner, so I have no complaints. And, uh, I think it's a very good program that the police department has set up. My next comment, uh, I think it's about, I think it's actually time that we actually got this street naming policy in place. I think it's a good thing. Once this becomes effective, I believe the clerk told me it was seven days, applications for the honorary street naming can be picked up at the clerk's office. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Pass.
Alderman Beedling.
I had a different view of the parade on Sunday. I watched it. Uh, I'd like to commend Joe Schmidt and Fisk for promptly picking up the mountain of trash that was thrown all over Washington Street, people's parkways. There were pickup trucks long after the parade was over with folks riding in the back, gas powered generators powering stereo systems that were blaring music up and down the streets. I followed one gentleman in particular, he was just winding up and down the streets